From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Chuckston Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board, do we convene? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivener.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Ms. Goldner, can you give us a report on actions taken in closed session?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Couch and members of the board. Agenda item number 27, this matter was heard by the board. No reportable action was taken. With respect to agenda item number 28, I believe that you may have an announcement to make on that one, so I will defer to you on that one after my report.
Okay.
With respect to agenda item number 29, this matter was heard by the board as to three cases. By unanimous 5-0 vote, the Board of Supervisors authorized County Council to file lawsuits for injunctions and other relief against the following medical marijuana dispensaries and their landlords, owners, and operators. One, the Green Garden Dispensary located at 915 North Chester Avenue in Bakersfield, and its landlord and/or owner, Bob Burke. And two, the Alternative Remedy Collective located at 629 and/or 633 San Gabriel Trail in Frazier Park. The Green Garden Dispensary is located approximately 300 feet from a school, in violation of the California Health and Safety Code. This authorizes the county to pursue abatement, civil penalties, and an order boarding up the premises at 912 North Chester for up to one year. Your Board's authority to County Council with respect to the Green Garden Dispensary and Bob Burke, its owner-operator, includes without limitation the authority to seek the full extent and amount of damages and other remedies available under the law, including the drug den abatement laws. No action was taken regarding the third case. And with respect to agenda item number 30, this matter was heard, no reportable action was taken, and that concludes my report, and I defer to you with respect to item number 28.
Thank you. Before we consider this afternoon's agenda, as County Council Goldner says, we have an announcement to make. While meeting in closed session on item 28 on this morning's agenda, the Board of Supervisors voted by a unanimous vote, five to zero, to appoint Marcus Mitchell as the Acting Director of Child Support Services effective November 13th, when Ms. Phyllis Nance retires from the county of Kern. Marcus Mitchell has been an Assistant Director of Child Support Services since 2009. In that time, he has helped Phyllis Nance to maintain the Child Support Services Department, maintain their standing as a top performer in child support collections and distribution. Mr. Mitchell has a solid background in supervising child support casework, as well as leading child support automation efforts at the state and regional level. He is well-equipped to lead the department during this transition period, and we just know he's going to do a great job. Congratulations, Mr. Mitchell. Would you like to say a couple words?
Chairman Couch and members of the board, I'd just like to say thank you so much for the opportunity to lead the Department of Child Support Services during this transition period. It means a lot to me, and I appreciate your vote of confidence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is the consent agenda. All items listed with a CA above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by staff. We can act on all of those in one motion, unless any member of the board or any member of the public chooses to pull any of those items for separate consideration. The consent agenda starts on page two of the afternoon agenda, consists of items three and five. Onto page three, all the items six through nine. Onto page four, all the items 10 through 17. Onto page five, items 18, 20, and then 22 through 26. And finishes up on page six with items 27 and 28. Is there anyone here that would like to pull any of those items for separate consideration? Any board members? Thank you. We just need a motion on consent, then.
Submit.
You have a motion?
Second.
Hang on a second. Please catch your votes.
Mr. Chairman, for some reason, my electronic voting system is not recognizing all board members, so they're not able to vote. So can we, can you call for?
Voice vote?
A voice vote?
Voice vote?
Yes.
You want all in favor, aye? Any opposed?
That would be fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes the consent calendar. That brings us back to item one, which is public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons who address the board on any matter that's not on the agenda but is under the jurisdiction of the board. Is there anyone here that would like to make a public presentation? Seeing none, item two is board member announcements and reports. Seeing none of those, we'll go to, take us to item four, under the Planning and Community Development Department. It's a request for determination of public convenience for the issuance of an off-sale beer and wine license and package store license located at 612 Cottonwood Avenue. Ms. Oviad?
Thank you. I'm here today with Scott Denny, Division Chief for Operations. We do have a map. Chairman Couch, members of the board, the Planning and Community Development Department has received a request from Mr. Al God to consider making a determination of public convenience with regard to an off-sale beer and wine type 20 license at the dollar-plus mark located at 612 Cottonwood Avenue in Bakersfield. A type 20 license is a package store. It authorizes the sale of beer and wine for consumption off the premises where sold, and minors are allowed on the premises. In a moment, I'm going to show you a map that shows you where all the valid licenses are within this census tract, as well as the census tract adjacent to it. On this map, you will notice that the Claude Richardson Center is, thank you, is 422 feet. It is essentially across the street. This is a preschool for developmentally challenged children. The next map you are going to see is all of the licenses. There are 14 valid alcohol licenses where eight alcohol licenses are allowed in the census tract. We have also expanded this to the census tract next door. You can see there is quite a concentration of type 20, type 47, which is distilled spirits and others in this area. Staff notes that this is actually a transfer from a Walmart store ownership located in South Bakersfield, so they are asking to transfer this license into this census tract. This license, of course, could be sold to someone else if your board today decides that this is not the appropriate location. I would like to note that what is there now is a dollar-plus mark. It's 2,920 square foot building. It is a legally established commercial building, and it sells snacks, beverages, personal products, and other miscellaneous items. It does not currently sell alcohol. As part of this request, we contacted the County Sheriff's Department, who indicated in the past two years they've had 10 calls to this exact location: petty theft, peace to sermons, and one case of a drug-related call where the officer noted an individual was attempting to sell drugs in front of the businesses. While we appreciate that expansion of this type of operation, that such a license could provide a source of income for the owner, we do believe there is an overconcentration in this area of licenses. We're already over-concentrated with the presence of six additional alcohol licenses when the census tract, and then the adjacent census tract has more. It's 400 feet from a school. It does abut a residential neighborhood, if we could see the aerial. We do believe that this does meet the criteria for your finding that although the public can already access alcoholic beverages, there is no necessity for this particular location for the public. I would like to note that staff has made a concerted effort to actually speak to the applicant, Mr. Al God. We have written him letters, we have called, we have visited his convenience stores the past two days, four times, and we have been unable to actually speak to him in person or impress upon him that he needs to come to your board and actually make his case. Therefore, as far as we know, he may or may not be here today. We have provided the staff report, and we have explained to the representatives that we've spoken to our recommendation. With that, we are recommending that your board deny the request by making a determination there is no public convenience or necessity for the issuance of an off-sale beer and wine package store license for beer and wine sales at 6112 Cottonwood Avenue, Suite B in Bakersfield, California, and make the recommended findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this item or the recommendation that you just heard? Seeing none, I'll return it to the board for questions and comments and action. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Director Oviad, in particular your extensive efforts to reach Mr. Al God and inform him. Is that you, Mr. Al God? Oh, please. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The Planning Department has been attempting to reach you for some time, sir, so happy that you're here, but we have been trying to communicate with you through mail and in person, so welcome. This is your opportunity to address the board. The recommendation by the staff is to not approve your request, given the overconcentration of alcohol access in the community and its proximity to a child development center. So this is your opportunity to be heard and to provide your input and let this board understand your perspective. So the floor is yours.
So, I mean, is it bro for no bro?
I'm sorry?
It's not approved yet, sir. It's not denied yet. This is the opportunity for the public, which is you, to speak to this item and the recommendation you just heard the director give.
Okay.
So what is your perspective, sir?
I'm glad to speak, I'm really good in English, so.
Okay.
Just a little bit.
Do we have someone that could provide interpretation available?
What is your native language, sir?
I'm sorry?
What is your native language?
Arabic.
It's Arabic?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chairman Couch, it's my understanding we don't have anybody readily available that can translate or interpret Arabic. If we had had some advance notice, we might have been able to do that.
That's my brother right here. You didn't kind of have me with that too?
Well, that would be great.
That would be helpful.
Can you state your name for the record?
Iman Al God.
Okay. And you're fluent in both Arabic and English, sir?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
So what we would like at this time is to hear the perspective of your brother. The recommendation from the staff, as just provided to us a moment ago, is to deny this request for alcohol because there are so many places in the area that are already provided. There is a big concentration of this kind of service, and it's so close to a child center. And so that's been the recommendation given to the board. Now, the board has not made a decision yet. It is in my district, so it's why I'm asking Mr. Al God his perspective, so that we can make the right decision.
He's trying to know, like, how long it'll take to get approved, which is yes or no?
Well, this is the hearing to make that determination. So our planning director, after a careful review of the area, we looked at an aerial map, we looked at other services that provide this already, and it appears as though in this neighborhood, there's already many, many places, and in fact, more than is typical of alcohol as a product to buy. And so that's why the recommendation is no at this time, and if this board agrees with the staff, then that's the final decision at this time.
Not at this time. What does he have to do? Anything, like, after here?
Excuse me for interrupting. Supervisor Perez, do you mind if I give him some sort of an oath about interpreting so he understands what his job is?
I think that's very appropriate.
Thank you.
Would you mind?
Thank you.
Sir, and this is to the brother, what is your name?
Iman.
Iman, is that your first name or last name?
First name.
Do you mind if I call you by your first name? Okay. Iman, are you going, do you understand Arabic?
Yeah.
Okay. And your job today is to interpret from English into Arabic and Arabic into English everything that is spoken. Do you understand that?
Um, I understand some, yeah.
Are you able to do that?
Um, I can translate a little bit, perhaps.
Okay. And that means that you need to interpret everything that is said verbatim. That means word for word. That means you're not to add any words, take out any words, or change the meanings of any words. Can you do that?
Okay. So he's gonna be, like, on hold, nothing yet?
Excuse me, sir. Could I get you to speak into the microphone so we can all hear you? Thank you.
So can you, can you interpret from English into Arabic and from Arabic into English every word that is said?
Okay, so I can tell him, like, that a pilot's on processing, is not approved?
No, that means that for every word that is said, you need to interpret from English into Arabic. Can you do that?
Yeah, a little bit.
And can you do that without changing any words, or adding any words, or taking out any words?
I'd rather you get a translator, if anybody available.
Okay. Are you not available to do that today? Are you not capable of that?
I understand some words and some not.
Okay.
Yeah, we may have some.
Does your brother speak any English?
Can he call his bookkeeper?
How long will it take for his bookkeeper to get here?
No, just on the phone, would he just be able to speak to her?
I'm sorry?
No.
Can I interrupt you? I think it's, would it be appropriate that we continue this to a date certain in the future?
Yes, and he should bring an interpreter with him.
If I could make, Chairman?
Sure, certainly.
Thank you. This is, this case is in my district, so I want to help you understand what's going on here. If you wouldn't mind providing your contact information, Mr. Nylon, this gentleman here, if you could give him your phone number, the best way to reach you, then we will call you and make sure that we'll sit down and talk through and help you understand the planning staff's recommendation today, and we'll hopefully put this matter off, Chairman, to a later date, so that we can ensure that you fully understand. Ms. Oviad, if you could provide some input, is that okay with your department?
Supervisor Perez, through the chair, there is a deadline by which, if your board does not take action, it is automatically approved. Therefore, I would not want to go past that deadline. We did have conversations with representatives of Mr. Al God that were at his office, so we did talk to people who did appear to understand what was going on. We certainly can attempt to arrange for a translator, however, we cannot go longer than 20 days from today to take action on this, otherwise it would be automatically approved.
Well, can we just give it a one-week extension?
Certainly.
We need a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion, Chairman. Thank you.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Oh, and we need to do a roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote? Supervisor Gleason? The motion is to continue the item Tuesday, November 3rd at 2:00 p.m.
I support that.
Supervisor Gleason? Oh, you did, okay. Supervisor Scrivener?
Yes.
Supervisor Couch?
Yes.
Supervisor Perez?
Yes.
Supervisor Maggard?
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you. I think that takes us all the way over to item 19, which is a discussion and report from California Water Service Company regarding water conservation and the water rate application to the Public Utilities Commission. Mr. Nylon?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Alan Christensen from my office will handle this item.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board supervisors, Alan Christensen from the County Administrative Office. This item is a discussion and report from Cal Water Service regarding their water rate application to the California Public Utilities Commission. As you know, that application has been submitted. It includes a 19.2% increase over a three-year period. Back in September, a representative from Cal Water gave a report, answered some questions. There were still some outstanding questions, so the board referred that item to be, to come back for their consideration. However, unfortunately, the representatives from Cal Water communicated with us this morning that they were not going to be able to make it today. They did not feel that they were prepared for answering those questions. The person that was, that they felt qualified to do that was out of the country, and so they've asked that we, they apologized, and they said we would like to reschedule. They thought it would be a more useful presentation. So with that, we don't have much of an item to discuss or to present.
If they're not here to give a report, then there's not much of a report to give, is there? So do we need to open this up for public comment, even though they're not here to make a presentation? Madam Counsel?
Chairman Couch, my advice is to do that and see if anybody has anything that they want to say.
Is there anyone here that would like to comment on the non-report? Thank you. Is our intent, I would assume, is to get back in touch with them and to find another date that they could actually be here? Okay. Supervisor Maggard, this is in response, I believe, to a referral of yours. Do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to say it is disappointing that we coordinated with them they would be here. Mr. Townsley said he was going to be out of town, but they had somebody else designated. I don't know why they've changed their mind. That's unfortunate, because the public deserves to hear from them as to what their responses are to our questions. Is there a date by which we need to, we have adopted a role as being an intervener in the process, is that correct, Madam Counsel?
Supervisor Maggard, through the chair, that's correct. We filed a motion to intervene.
And that means that we hope to speak and influence the process so that the concerns of our constituents, the people that live here and are served by this company, those concerns are heard. Is there a date by which that needs to be done, so that that can be on the record and transmitted to the Public Utilities Commission?
Our motion has already been filed. We're waiting for a ruling on it. It's a motion to intervene.
But the process by which they will determine if Cal Water will receive their 19.2% increase in rates, when will that take place?
I'm not aware of any hard deadline at this point. We'll have plenty of opportunity to participate.
Okay. Well, I certainly hope that we could schedule this and have it done before we, before Thanksgiving. We have, I think, three meetings left between now and the middle of November, so I would look forward, Mr. Christensen, to your scene, if you could bring that back to us at the earliest opportunity. Thank you.
Do we need any sort of a motion on this item? Okay. And that takes us to item 21, which is a proposed increased salary range for, of one vacant Geographic Information Systems Manager in the budget unit 8954, from salary range 63.4 to salary range 66.5, to be effective October 31, 2015. Mr. Rowan?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The item before you is a request to approve an increase in the salary range for one position, the Geographic Information Systems Manager classification, from a salary range of 63.4 to 66.5, with an annual fiscal impact of $21,847. The item, or this particular classification, was formerly titled Geographic Information Systems Coordinator, and it was housed in the Public Works Department and Engineering Survey and Permit Services Department prior to that. It's been vacant as a full-time permanent position for a number of years, five to be exact. The Human Resources Division, formerly the Personnel Department, has run several recruitments for this particular position at the existing salary range, and has been unsuccessful in finding a permanent candidate to run this program. The General Services Division, as you know, has taken over the Information Technology Services Division of the County Administrative Office, and has sought to include this particular position within their budget unit and under their leadership for the purpose of coordinating the county's entire GIS programs under one roof. So this particular request is alongside a couple of other items that your board has approved to ensure that the county is well-equipped to manage its GIS program county-wide, under one person's leadership and expertise. The job specification for this position was revised significantly and approved by the Civil Service Commission in October of this year, October 12th of this year. The job qualifications now require that the individual or successful applicant have significant experience in the GIS field, and the job duties for this position have been enhanced significantly to include a more of a managerial role. The person will be leading the GIS coordination team for the county, overseeing all of the GIS functions of the county and other, its constituent departments. And so the position has changed significantly from the previously titled position and at the previous salary range. So we are requesting that your board approve this salary increase for this position. It is vacant and unfilled, and the department is seeking to run a recruitment with the new salary range as soon as we get your board's approval. So it is recommended that your board approve the increase in salary range from 63.4 to 66.5 for the job classification of Geographic Information Systems Manager, and effective upon adoption, and refer the matter to the Human Resources Division to amend the departmental positions and salary schedule. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on the recommendation? Seeing none, I'll return to the board for questions, comments, and action. Seeing none, I'll return to the board for questions, comments, and action. Or non-action?
I'm doing approval.
You have a motion?
I'll second it.
You have a second. We need a roll call vote again?
Yes. Supervisor Gleason? Supervisor Scrivner?
Yes.
Supervisor Couch?
Yes.
Supervisor Perez?
Yes.
Supervisor Maggert?
Aye.
Thank you. All ayes.
Four ayes in a here. Thank you. We need a motion, now we just, that brings us to the close of the agenda, we need a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015, at 9:00 a.m.
So moved.
No objection, we're adjourned. Thank you.